Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorancecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, welcome to the July 12th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for today is Proverbs 19, 4 and 5. Wealth makes many friends. A false witness will not go unpunished, nor will a liar escape. And I have the dog from the kennel this morning.
Hiya.
Yeah, come on, girl. Come on, little baby, come on, hi. Well, hello, look at you, you just want to lick me and, oh, you're so sweet. We have a female, boxer, lab, I don't know, a little bit of everything. She's very sweet, would love to go home with somebody, is she available? She's available now, so come on down to the kennel, we have thirty-some dogs now, luckily. She wants to go see you, look, she's talking. What do you got? What do you got to say? We have thirty-some dogs, we had forty-some last week because of the fireworks, a lot of dogs ran away, so we had a lot of owner redemption, so come on down, you can check us out on Facebook or at our website, lorrainecounty.us/dogstoadopt, so come see us, thank you. Sweetheart, Madam Clerk?
At 9:35 we'll have our second public hearing on CDBG and resolutions, we have no investments, appropriations.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Travel?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Travel?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet, please within jurisdiction, Lorraine County Commissioners.
Welcome back, Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, sorry to say you have to work today. I understand I went pretty quick last week, no such luck this week. I do have a need for an executive session, I'd like to discuss potential hires at, both in the IT Department and 911, if we can get to that, but also want to update you on all labor negotiations at Job and Family Services and some things that have occurred there, also potential purchase of real estate and a pending legal issue. The, all of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session, we talk about those matters that I've described, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, I just know, the cameras are not on out there, do you?
I don't run the cameras.
Okay, you don't have them?
The, what, the screens you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, by golly.
They were, but now they're not, so just...
They were, but they're not, huh? Let's see if we can do something with that.
There you go.
You got them.
I gotta tell you, this, this magic stuff is...
Magic technology?
Approve away the readings of June 20th, 21st, 28th and July 5th.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approved payment amount of $26,985.82 to victims of domestic violence, Lorraine County Safe Harbor, Inc., DBA Genesis House, as collected by Lorraine County for period January 1st 2017 through June 30th 2017, in accordance with the ORC 2303.201 and 31113.3439.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approved payment amount of $26,985.82 to victims of domestic violence, Lorraine County Safe Harbor, Inc., DBA Genesis House, as collected by Lorraine County for period January 1st 2017 through June 30th 2017, in accordance with the ORC 2303.201 and 31113.3439.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
I hope this is the last time for sure.
Yeah, me too, let's see.
Amend Resolution 17422 on June 28, 2017, modifying various resolutions and adopt the fee schedule for legal counsel appointed by the courts to represent injured criminal defendants. Amendment is to reflect clarification payment for the cases.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Really, let's hope we're done with this.
The, well, you know, I don't think we are, Commissioner.
Oh, God, are you serious?
The, and, and I'll tell you why, I just received something from CCO and we have been tracking it for a while, I think you saw it.
The capital.
Capital offense fees of, I think it's September 1st or October 1st.
Right, it goes to $125 an hour per...
Goes to a hundred, per attorney and usually on capital cases, it's two attorneys. So, we're not out of the woods, I am, I'm not sure where the state's going to be on the reimbursement because understanding that, as you know, they reimburse half of the Indian Defense Fund.
Forty-four percent now.
Yes, so they've been dropping from the half and we got you, you through CCO worked with them, we were getting more, now we're getting less, and if they have to dilute that pool with these new increased fees, we're going to pay the whole $125 because they're going to drop that forty-four down to forty-one or forty-two or forty, so in a roundabout way, we're going to pay that increase ourselves here. They may pretend like they're going to share some of the cost, but they just take it from over here and they move it over here and go, hey, look what we're doing for you, and they're not doing anything for us. So, I can't blame the state for the change, it came out of the Supreme Court, they, they made this a mandate, it was a court order on, on the attorneys, it wasn't legislative authority that did this, but it's still money that we have to find to pay for all of this. So, are we done? No, we'll be back doing this again.
In September doing it, Justin.
Correct.
It is what it is. God bless the state legislature.
That wasn't, I don't think it was state legislature.
Yeah, at least we'll get a, yeah.
Yeah, it was handed off to the Supreme Court.
Right, excuse me?
I see, at least it won't be next week we're mending it again, we're done for a while.
Yeah, I hope so, okay.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the airport, approve agreement with Richland Engineering Limited for engineering and construction services for pavement marking project, the amount of $8,500, ODOT reimbursement grant and ninety-five percent local share, five percent.
So moved?
Second.
Can we reiterate that this is a grant from FAA and we pay only five percent? No, this is just for the engineering work, for the markings, and they'll come out of that hundred and fifty thousand we receive every year for maintenance from the FAA to do this project, but no local dollars except the five percent match. And that five percent match, I assure you, is coming from our agricultural operation growing corn at the airport, so I don't believe it'll be coming from the general fund.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
911, approved change order number one in the amount of not to exceed $36,383 to down Mills Plantation, North Ridgeville, for unforeseen conditions and additional work on the Burns Road Annex for paving, parking, lot, water lines and wiring.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Any, any questions, Commissioner? The, I don't really like change orders very much, it was out there, there was some unmarked water lines when we started the dig for the new parking lot, we had to move a fire hydrant that became a little bit more challenging than we thought. As you were, let me roll you back to your visualization of what the parking lot's going to be, we're putting a new parking lot on the side of the building and expanding the existing one up in front of the building so that the employees can park closer to the front door, otherwise we would have had to bring them in the back of the building, there was very limited parking in, by the front entrance. It's going to be very nicely done, but as they were, they were digging, there was a lot of unmarked water lines, one of the ones was, there was irrigation system over there, we didn't even know it was there, it wasn't on any of the drawings, and that went right away as soon as the clout and the bulldozer came through, so I'm sorry for the change order, but it's necessary.
Okay.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Fort House, approve change order number one in the amount of $7,330 to Moser Construction Fremont, unforeseen conditions discovered during the work on renovation historic Fort House project with third floor framing.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Once again, this is, you, we will be seeing a lot of these, I think.
I figure that.
They're not going to be very expensive, I don't believe, but every time we open up a wall, take something down, they opened up some concealed walls that were probably concealed up in the forties under that huge renovation, the first big renovation the courthouse underwent, only to find out that there was old fireplace flues and all kinds of stuff that have to come out that you could, just physically can't see them, and there's no, there's no existing drawings for all the work they did back then, so we're trying to keep them all under control, but this one clearly was an unseen condition until the walls came out.
We're going to expect that with the old buildings.
We actually have some neat things, Karen was showing me this morning, they brought in, that they showed the billboard from the Historical Society, the old 1881 hinges and covers, vent covers and stuff.
Well, what I, what I would love to have found somewhere hidden in the courthouse is the old fireplace mantles that came off the, you know, the, those huge, huge fireplaces they had in the two original courtrooms, but a lot of stuff left, I think on the original renovation back in the, back in the forties, not to be seen ever again.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Children and family, approve and enter various contracts for purchases and delivery of mentoring services on an as-needed basis for family center support and services grant for fiscal year 18 effective July 1st 2017 through June 30th 2018. Grant was allocated from Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, Catholic Charities Corporation 7,700 and Childcare Resource Center 15,000.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Actually, Jim, some questions in regards to this, we touched on it the other day, in regards to the changing in the early intervention, these contracts go through next year 18, but with the new delivery model and the single source provider, how is this going to affect what we're doing?
Well, for the, for the moment, it's, it's a heck of a lot more work for me, so let's, let's, let's go through a little bit of it, and I've been working on this now off and on for, for about a month and a half, looking at the funding streams and the revenues, and of course our Children and Family First Director is leaving, Friday's the last day, don't blame her, she's going to have a nice job someplace else, and I'm happy for her, she's been here about six or seven years, believe it or not, we, we saw her come in and it's hard to wait, time has gone by, she's done a fabulous job, but it's good that she was looking for something else, we were, I was aware of that, and I'm glad she got it because there's no money to pay her now, under this new change from the state. I have spoken with all three of you, you did tell me that we would shore up the Family and First Department as best we needed because these are vital services in our community. Well, the Thursday before I left, I thought I had a good handle on this, I met with the Executive Committee of the Children and Family First Council, I met with the Children and Family First Board in open session, and we worked on a solution and I thought we, we had one, and that was great for, I think about three hours, and then the state announced that they were going to a sole provider under the Help Me Grow Early Intervention Services, which was going to be located out of Cleveland, and, and so that, that is actually the Cleveland Hearing and Speech Center that you see on our second resolution here. What occurred earlier in the year was that they were looking at consolidating services, so they asked for, generally for people to fill out, I'm going to call it an RFP, so you could be a coordinator in the service area. We had done that for a few counties that were very similar to us up here, Richland, Ashland, Diner, so forth, and partnered with them. We specifically went around Cuyahoga, it's a little bit too big for us to handle and partner with, they have their own unique set of situations there that don't align themselves well with delivery of services here in Lorraine County. We had, nobody had heard anything from the state, now it wasn't just us, all of the folks in the state were going through all of these changes at their Children and Family First areas, some, there's, in many counties they're housed differently, they're funded differently, supported differently, but the basic concept is still the same. Not hearing anything going into the third week, ending the third week of June, we just figured the state was not going to go to that model this year, they were going to continue the contracts, and so we based our decision-making on that occurring, although nobody told us that was what was going to happen, I'm thinking, how can you award a centralized contract a week before the fiscal year starts and expect anybody to be able to get their program up and running? It's just ridiculous. Well, of course, I said state and ridiculous in the same sentence, right? And that's exactly what they did, the Thursday of the third week in June, they awarded the contract, but they didn't just pick a few around the state to consolidate, they picked one. So they're scrambling now over in, in Cuyahoga, Cleveland actually, to be able to figure out how to deliver these services and get enough people on board to be able to do the intake part of the Help Me Grow. Direct services will still be provided to local providers, I believe, I'm still trying to sort that out, but for us, what that means is that we can no longer fund central intake, the, we have now gotten an extension to the end of July because there's no way they could have performed those services beginning July 1st, but by the end of July, we will no longer have funding for central intake, and so what is the central intake process? Any resident Lorraine County that is looking for services from the Children and Family First Council, their first point of contact is our central coordinated, a centralized coordinated intake person who helps them and directs them towards the service that best fits their needs, whether it be through our funding, DD, mental health, drug addiction services, we get all kinds of calls, we're not, we're not the 2-1-1, but we, we do work with the families and we do work with the schools and we're trying, we try to be there, first presence in the home with the Help Me Grow program, we'll no longer be able to afford to have that because there's no funding for it. That, that was about $120,000 for the whole program, and that's leaving. So I haven't even really discussed that with you, that was happening just shortly before I was leaving for vacation, I need to deal with that. We still have some funding and other grants that I'm going to go over with you later in this week, early next week, and a couple, we have one part-time, one full-time person over there, so we have to run those grants, and I don't have them in front of me, I was a little pulling off the cuff here. And then there's two other grants that, that need to be administered, and I'm looking at how to do that because we no longer have enough money out of any of the grants to pay any kind of director at all, and I'm grievously concerned about that, and I'm trying to look for a solution. So, I'm breaking this out into four components for you so we can have conversation individually on it, I can give you an idea of what I think the plan should be, but we're getting clobbered here, we have no money.
Right, we've got a phone call about it, we can have from Connie Osborne with Neighborhood House, I'm meeting with her to discuss, she has some ideas in regards to early intervention, I was waiting for things to sort of like settle down.
Yeah, I, I know what her idea is, I went over it with Melissa the other day and...
Oh, did you?
It, it really, I think what she wants to do is innovative thinking, but it's not possible, and I'll explain it to you. You can't have somebody doing both parts of the service delivery model, it's, it's just not, it's just not the right way to deliver those services, you can't, you can't check yourself.
Okay.
And, and so, I like Connie, I used to be on the Neighborhood House Board way back when.
Did a good job.
And, and, you know, I'm going to be looking for partners in the community, key here is, we're going to have to decide very quickly as a community, that means all the social service agency, whether we're going to continue, which means we have to find funding, we need to do what we should have did fifteen or twenty years ago when they formed this, everybody needs to be putting money into the pool from the various agencies, we could fund a lot of this stuff, central intake and so, we still need that, we still need wraparound services, still need coordinated care services, the, but this is another push that's going to push these things back onto the local level that were funded more from the state previously. I don't know what's going to happen when they roll out what's going, the program out of Cleveland, I'm hoping that we, we have somebody on the ground here, I would have hoped that they actually funded us to keep our person on the ground here, but it doesn't appear that that's going to happen. And, there's more to come, there's still some unknowns, but Melissa's leaving Friday, I still have employers to deal with, I still have open grants to deal with, you see where we're changing some of these, we're not dealing with small numbers here.
Right.
And I have no money to pay a director to be over this agency right now, even with the, the support that you pledged to me to shore up the funding shortages so we could deliver these vital services.
Right, they're very, I mean, I know a lot of people need these services, right?
It's not enough, and I'm blaming you, you, I came to you and you guys said, yes, let's make sure that this works, so now I have to go out and I have to, I have to talk to a lot of these agency heads, and, and we got to, we got to do a better job of working together, or we just shut this thing down and, and let, let it roll out of Cleveland and see, you know, beg for a cracker here and there, so I wish I had better news for you, but every time I turn around, we're trying to make a dollar out of fifty cents, and news for you. We're out of tricks, and this is just the beginning of, and there's other issues coming down the road, so, sorry for the long-winded discussion, but I'm very disappointed in this whole thing.
Which is important, yeah, it's frustrating.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve and enter in various contracts for purchase and delivery services for the Help Me Grow Early Intervention Program for fiscal year 18, effective July 1st 2017 through June 30th 2018. Grant allocation from Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities for children with diagnosed delays or disabilities ages zero to three. Neighborhood Alliance for $183,115 and Cleveland Hearing and Speech 3,000.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Community Development Award Contract to Chris Russo Partner PAC LLC for 93 Cleveland Street Amherst, the amount of $6,041.90 for downtown revitalization grant assistance, CDBG program year 15 from private set aside rehab.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Award Contract to Greg and Dana Christensen of Zilch Florist LLC, 136 Park Avenue, in the amount of $10,000 for downtown revitalization grant assistance, CDBG program year 15 from private set aside rehab.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Award Contract to Chris Schaefer of Schaefer Properties LTD, 225 Cleveland Street, Amherst, the amount of $10,000 for downtown revitalization grant assistance, CDBG program year 15 from private set aside rehab.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Don, do we have any more money left over from this grant? And this is, the owners of these properties also put in $10,000 to get $10,000, so it's a hundred percent match?
Or more.
Or more.
Thank you, Commissioner Kukowski, yes, you are correct, each one is matched dollar for dollar, one of these actually put in $13,000 on behalf of the $10,000 they are receiving, which is not unusual at all in this program. Currently, we are down to $16,000 that are left in the grant for the downtown revitalization, and I can tell you that Teresa Gillis and Max Upton from our staff are both making that last push to get those last dollars out. We do have a max of $10,000, so realistically, we are looking at two projects at most to be able to fund.
Do you have some in the queue then?
Uh, no, we are about out of the queue for the $16,000, so we are reaching out again. We did have one person, or one building owner that was interested, and then he ended up backing out at the last moment, I'll actually be calling him to see if I can't bring him back and get a better understanding of exactly what happened, but...
Correct.
That's where we're at right now, we moved through it and it's been so far a very successful program, and we're down to the last final push, so I appreciate all the support you guys have provided from submitting the application through to, I don't know how many resolutions now you've approved.
Yeah, a lot.
So, thank you.
It's good, it's good.
Where we, where we at on our submission for a new grant?
Actually, you'll be hearing about it in about five minutes, and I do have Jan Mackert from the City of Oberlin here as well, and we'll be looking at submitting a grant for $300,000 in two days.
The one for Oberlin, right?
Correct.
That we were working on, so I, I knew we were pressing some timeframes here, and then, of course, you and I have something we've been talking about with Wellington and I want to finish up with you so we can present some options to the board, and I'm thinking about expanding that concept to a couple of the small villages, no reason we just do it in one, we could incorporate it into three or four of them, so hopefully we'll bring you back some, a local program, some of the, some of the villages could use something similar to what Amherst received and we're hoping to be successful at Oberlin, but they're really too small to compete for the bigger program.
Correct, and also with several of the villages, they also do not have the nonprofit organization to really help run these programs as well, and that's the partnership that the state is looking for in these downtown revitalizations.
Like a main street.
Is the local community, a main street and the county all working together, and I can tell you, we pull our hair out at times just trying to manage it to get it done, so...
So, you know, I'm looking at...
We see.
That's awful.
The, the...
Couldn't help it.
That's sad, that's sad. The, the, so we're going to be looking at possibly a small local solution, putting a program together to hopefully be able to work with the smaller villages because this program's, has been very successful, and there's, there's some really nice downtowns in Grafton, La Grange, Wellington, much smaller, that, that we want to, we want to be part of, the change that happens in those communities also, so we'll be bringing some stuff to you in the next few weeks outside of this. I didn't know what we were going to talk about today, I'm really happy about that, but I get a little worried.
We keep moving.
All right.
It's another, another example, the, the board working with the communities, working in partnership, helping small businesses, you know, downtown Amherst is an exciting place already, we're just helping to improve and make it even better.
And again, we do appreciate it, you may recall, we even had to make changes mid-stream to preserve some open space development for downtown Amherst as well with the parking as well, and that was something that this board in the City of Amherst and Main Street were all able to get through the process that is DSA down in Columbus to get them to understand and to allow those changes to occur, and hopefully we'll be seeing something positive there shortly as well.
Right.
So, thank you very much.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Done probation, approved grant agreement, amount of $275,872 with the Ohio Department of Rehab and Correction, Division of parole and community services, Bureau of Community Sanctions for non-residential misdemeanor.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Uh, we'll do our public hearing now. City, is that you, Don? Okay.
Before we get started, just so, uh, you're aware, I have, uh, Megan Wainwright and Ben Martins, who's actually our new ED specialist, passing out the sign-in sheets. And, uh, I'll reiterate, I do have Jan Mackert here from the city of Oberlin, so if there are questions about their downtown revitalization grant. If I'm unable to answer them, uh, with any real clarity, hopefully she can. And so with that, uh, Ken will open up the, uh, second public hearing for our community development block grant formula allocation program and application to be submitted to, uh, DSA. This public hearing is being conducted on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in order to make our application for CDBG community development allocation uh, for the program grant year two thousand seventeen. We held our first public hearing on March eighth, two thousand seventeen, uh, where we explained what were the general guidelines for the application. Also during that presentation, eligibility requirements were laid out, and the application process was discussed. During the, this hearing, we'll actually go over the basic grant, grant requirements, proposed projects that, uh, will be submitted to the state for CDBG Community Development Allocation Program Grant, Program Year two thousand seventeen. The guidelines are, the county is permitted up to twenty percent for the allocation to administer the program and fair housing costs. The county cannot exceed fifteen percent of its total public allocation for public services. The county is limited to no more than four activities total. Uh, fair housing and administration are not counted in the four, though. The county is no longer required to undertake a project in a city that is within the county that was once a direct allocation. As you can recall, that was North Ridgeville for the past three years. Uh, the activities must meet one of three national objectives, benefiting low and moderate income persons, addressing slum or blighted areas. And the last one, which is never used, is, uh, national emergency. Uh, the CDBG Program Year Seventeen Grant is now a two-year cycle. This is a major change from previous allocations. You will not get this next year. That might be a good thing. Uh, the county's, uh, Program Year two thousand seventeen allocation is four hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars for the next two years total. This is a hundred seventy thousand less than we were awarded for Program Year sixteen if we were to turn that into a two-year allocation. So, the trend is continuing, unfortunately. Notification and funding request applications for the availability of CDBG funds were mailed to the townships, villages, small cities, main streets, nonprofits, uh, on February twenty-seventh. This year, Lorain County Community Development Department received a total of ten requests for funding from nine, from eight different communities, seven of them being townships and one being a nonprofit. Uh, the applications submitted were reviewed for eligibility. Of the eight submitted, four were determined not to meet the qualifications as were presented. Uh, today, I'll be going over the projects for our allocation grant for Program Year two thousand seventeen application. It is our desire, following the outcome of this public hearing, to submit the Lorain County Board of Commissioners an application for approval. The application will then be submitted to Ohio Department of Services Agency Office of Community Development prior to their July, or July fourteenth, two seven, two thousand seventeen deadline. The following activities, uh, to be funded with the two thousand seventeen, uh, Community Development Allocation Grant Funds are as follows. Senior center activity in Sheffield Lake to construct an addition on their existing senior center. The national objective is limited clientele. Two hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars of the two thousand seventeen CDBG Community Development Allocation Grant Funds are proposed for this. Uh, sanitary sewer improvements in Sheffield's Lake, uh, to inspect, repair, and rehabilitate sanitary sewers on Maple Grove, Oliver, Howell, Roberts, Hawthorne, Ivanhoe, and Tennyson. The national objective is low and moderate income area-wide benefit. Sixty-one thousand dollars and fifty, sixty-one thousand, fifty-six dollars is proposed for this one. Uh, public services, Neighborhood Alliance Conducting Meals on Wheels Program, seventy-one thousand, five hundred of the two thousand seventeen grant funds. Uh, the national objective here is limited clientele. Uh, limited clientele means that we're actually income testing to make sure that, uh, the people that are receiving the services are indeed qualified, uh, for that. And this Meals Program will serve, uh, primarily the southern quadrant of Lorain County is where they're focusing the dollars, while they do operate the program countywide. Uh, fair housing will be eighteen thousand dollars to implement our fair housing program, which is required. And that is for two years, so we're averaging nine thousand a year for this program. And administration, we have set aside seventy-seven thousand, four hundred to administer the program, which covers our salary costs as well as advertising supplies and things such of that matter. All of these activities must, uh, be completed by December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Uh, the second part of the grant is actually the competitive set-aside. Uh, we are going, working with the city of Oberlin to send an application down for three hundred thousand dollars. And the activities are proposed, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the downtown program, uh, addressing the national objective of slum and blight. And thirty thousand dollars to be set aside for the administration of the program. And those funds will be used to assist the, the city, Main Street, and the county in covering our costs similar to on the allocation side. These activities must be completed by August thirty-first of two thousand nineteen. And with that, I ask, uh, for any questions anyone may have about this from, uh, the board?
Don, I, I'd like you to speak to one portion that actually affects a, a great deal of our community, and, and that's the Meals on Wheels Program. And, and why, uh, even though our funding has decreased, why we're not able to shift funding and maintain the level of support for that program that we have previously?
Well, uh, in the federal rules for, uh, the actual block grant program, there is a hard cap on what can be provided as a public service. And that hard cap is fifteen percent of, uh, the dollars that are awarded to a community.
I, yeah, I just felt it was important that, that we addressed that. Um, we've always supported the Meals on Wheels Program here in Lorain County. Uh, we, we're all, we're suggesting and, and want to continue to do that. I think the board is, is positioned correctly to want to do that. Uh, but, you know, there was a couple of questions about why we decreased the funding, even though we, we have the ability to pick some programming and out of the submissions that we received. But this one's already maxed out. It usually is maxed out out of the available funding permissible under, under the rules and regulations.
And there was a change at the state as well. There was a time several years ago, you may, uh, remember, where we would always apply for a waiver on the public service to go from fifteen percent to twenty percent. The state eliminated that about five years ago now, where they were no longer granting waivers on the public service. And I, probably because the state also has that fifteen percent hard limit, and too many people were requesting waivers where they were having a hard time maintaining that fifteen percent. And so now, it's across the board.
Now, I, I don't know if you noticed, but maybe, I don't know if we have anybody here for job and family services that would, but, you know, we maybe want to look at Title Twenty funds and, and how they're using Title Twenty funds to be able to do something with, with, with that program, add additional Title Twenty funds. So, uh, I'm gonna have a talk with, with Bob over there and, and, and see if there's some way that we can assist with that. Because food hasn't become any less costly, uh, yet we're decreasing support of the program. And, and I, I know it's vital to the people that are receiving assistance through the Meals on Wheels in our community that the program expand, not contract.
Anytime you talk to the senior advocates, they tell me that that's number one thing that keeps coming up. The seniors keep talking about being very concerned about, uh, where their next meal's coming from. And, you know, I mean, they've, uh, been dedicated to going to work and paying their taxes and serving our country, all these things. And, you know, and then they get to the end of life, and then, uh, people start to play games with them.
It has been a, uh, a long, slow, and painful road on this, uh, issue, uh, with the continuing lack of resources. The other thing I want to point out about the Meals on Wheels Program that's, uh, very important, I think oftentimes overlooked, but can be just as important as the nutrition, is that actual interaction where they are coming out for those who are, uh, stuck at home and unable. It's not just a nutrition program, but it's really a wellness program where we're checking on them and making sure that they are, you know, still in good mental health, that they are able to get around, that they're able to acknowledge the door, that there's someone out looking after them and looking out for them. And all those volunteers that provide those meals are, uh, you know, God sent not only to the people receiving them, but to the community at large. And so, our inability because of continuing reduced resources, uh, that are being provided for these programs, it's not just the nutrition, but it's the overall well-being of our seniors and our community as a whole.
Each day, and, and some, some of these folks don't get a visit each day, so they, they look forward to the meal coming. There's a few minutes spent with them in the home. Uh, as Don said, it's, 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 it's really important that, that, that these things continue. Uh, you know, if I, if I had my way, I'd be recommending to you that we spend much more of the money on the Meals on Wheels Program and help our seniors. But I wanted you, everybody to be aware, cause people, they don't know.
Right.
And that, that you're doing the maximum permissible under the law with these funds. Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Don.
Are there any other questions, uh, from the board or from the public?
Any public, uh, wishing, come on up, just all you need to do. You have to come up, you have to come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, even though we know who you are, Frank.
So Frank Woodfield, uh, address two hundred Middle Avenue, Suite two hundred, Elyria. Um, my question is about the fifteen percent. Um, so I heard the Meals on Wheels is one portion, but could you lay out the rest of the allocation? And the reason for my question is, there's a huge need in the community for resources to be put behind workforce development. There's a lot of people who are disconnected from work, and there's a lot of companies who are struggling to stick around because they can't fill those jobs. And I know the city of Elyria has allocated some CDBG funds towards getting people connected to work. So I wanted to hear what the rest of that allocation is, and if there has been conversation about that. I'm sure there was a strategic plan that drove these decisions, so I just want a little background on that.
Well, as it relates to the public service, uh, the full fifteen percent was allocated to Meals on Wheels. Uh, we only receive four hundred and seventy-seven thousand total for a two-year period now. And so we were putting together a total of seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars towards, uh, the Meals on Wheels Program.
So it was just a shorthand. You kind of drew a shorthand, and that's what you had to deal with budgetarily.
Frank, every, every year, it's been dropping, and they actually added North Ridgeville to us four years ago.
Uh, yes, it was four years ago.
And then didn't add any more to our allocation.
In fact, it declined.
Yeah, they lowered our allocation, but added all of North Ridgeville to our purview, so.
Yeah, and seven years prior to that, they added Amherst and cut our allocation, and I am sure prior to that was Oberlin, and it's been non-stop. And there's not in the CDBG, um, so I know fifteen percent is the public service. Is there a portion in the county CDBG that's toward economic development?
No, we are able to apply on a case-by-case basis, uh, for either recapitalization of a revolving loan fund, if we deplete our fund, and/or for, uh, infrastructure that would support job creation, such as, uh, new roadway, water, sewer.
Got it.
Uh, those type of items. And those are capped at no more than five hundred thousand in any project as a, uh, non-entitlement community. Uh, the other important thing to, to remind everyone is that we, as a, uh, small city or county, uh, allocation, uh, are unable to spend our funds within the cities of Lorain and Elyria because they receive the same money directly from the federal government in larger amounts and with more flexibility because they're dealing directly with the federal government. We have the, uh, state layer to, uh,
Got it.
go through as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Anybody else have any questions before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, I make the motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Callow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Don.
Um, now I'd like to make a resolution to approve the CDBG grant program.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Callow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez? I think I caught him off-guard there.
He did. I thought there was more to come. I, I apologize for that. You know, I think I'll just yield the counsel at this point. We have a lot to cover this morning, uh, in executive.
Mr. Ennis?
Yes, I do have, uh, I think, three pending or imminent, um, court action to discuss with the commissioners in the executive session.
Commissioners' report.
Well, I attended a meeting in the heart of Lorain County with Mayor Hunter, uh, in Sheffield Village. He had an open house yesterday talking about some, um, improvements that are going to be made to Route two fifty-four in Sheffield Village. Uh, those improvements will happen in spring or summer of two thousand nineteen, so he had a nice little crowd there, uh, to learn. ODOT was there and just letting everybody know how that was gonna work out. And then unfortunately, this morning, I got a phone call that my mother-in-law of twenty-one years, uh, my ex-husband Alan Kokowski, his mom passed away, Doris Kokowski. So, uh, my heartfelt, you know, thoughts and prayers go out to the family. So, she was a great lady.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a busy week with meetings and such, but I'd like to congratulate, uh, American Cancer Society. Lorain County had its first countywide Relay for Life at Elyria Catholic. All the teams came to one place. They did a fantastic job. Uh, congratulations. Bobby Sears, twenty-two years part of Relay, says it's her last one. So, uh, yeah, very good job. Congratulations to him. End of my report.
You know, you've always been very involved in that.
Yeah.
So, sponsoring teams.
He wore a dress a couple of times.
Oh, plenty of times I wore a dress.
They paid big money to see that.
Right-hand pictures of it.
Uh, once again, our, uh, condolences go out to the Eddie Edwards family. Uh, they had his, uh, viewing and service, uh, this past weekend. Just, uh, a great family and a, uh, very strong public servant, and, uh, I had a good conversation with his, his son the other day. But, uh, he will be, will be missed, but will be long remembered for his public service. Uh, congratulations to Bill Byrd and all the members of the Lorain County Historical Society, uh, for their ice cream social on Sunday. I think that's the first time I've been the one where I wasn't, uh, felt like I was baking in the sun or a high humidity or whatever. It was just such a pleasant day, a great turnout. Um, just fabulous people at the Historical Society. I had a chance to work closely with them when I was a state legislator as well, too. And, um, just a very dedicate, dedicated group of individuals, and always loved touring the old cars. I wish I had that kind of money where I could have a couple of old cars, uh, but I don't have Jay Leno's money either, so. But, uh, yes, I do. But it was, uh, just a very nice event. Uh, I did miss the Farm Bureau Pork Chop Dinner that is held each year. And, uh, the Farm Bureau does a, a great job for Lorain County and, uh, for the agricultural families of Ohio. Uh, also had a chance to work closely with them when I was in the, the legislature, and it's, you know, just so important that everybody be working together at, uh, during these times with the agriculture and the concern about, uh, what ends up in the lake, and just make sure everybody gets on the same page and, uh, but, um, they, they just do a fabulous job for the county. Uh, Lakefront Lorain County, another, uh, stakeholders' meeting was held, uh, and there will be more public meetings coming. But, uh, just working on some conceptual things that have been discussed with county leaders, uh, some things that, uh, have come up in the community, some things from the feedback. Uh, the consultants are putting, uh, some concepts on paper, and I can't stress enough, they're concepts. Nobody says anything's gonna be said or done tomorrow, and not taking anybody's land or anything like that, so don't hit the panic button. Um, but it's just, uh, coming up with concepts at this point. Our next public hearing will be, uh, July twenty-seventh at, uh, Lorain High School. Um, and then on August second, we'll be meeting in Avon Lake for a feedback session at the lake house there on, uh, Lake Road. And then, uh, I think one of the most popular events of the year in Lorain County, uh, best of Lorain County coming up tomorrow at Lorain County Community College. You'll see all kinds of good folks, and, and if you leave there hungry, it's your own fault, so.
Also Sheffield Lake Community Days Parade tomorrow.
Right.
And Friday, I mentioned it last week, I'll mention it again, um, open house at the Lorain County Transportation Center at five o'clock. If you've never been in there, it's a really beautiful, uh, old building, and it's, it's been restored, and it's, it's absolutely gorgeous. And it reminded me, cause you said old cars, there's also a Cruisin' Cars show in the same lot over there, so if you're an old car enthusiast, there'll be light refreshments and cars to look at and old buildings, so, come down Friday.
I think it's going well with the car show. We invited them to use the transportation parking lots, uh, to, uh, bring more folks in downtown Elyria. I think that's going real well over there, and that, that,
We've heard no more complaints.
Well, we're working on it. Uh, the, the, I think it's a better location for them than where they were out by the old big lots. Um, and plus, it, it brings them into the core area of the city, and that's what spurred this open house at the Transportation Center because, uh, we're hoping the traffic with, with the, with the, the car folks, and, and the people that visit them will also visit Transportation Center so we can get a look inside. It's a beautiful place. Most people have not taken an opportunity, when available, to go inside, and we're gonna schedule a few more of these in, in the future.
Good.
Book correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Callow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Public comment.
Anybody from the, uh, public wish to address the board this morning? You just have to come up to the podium and just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bob Wickens, and I'm a resident of Lorain, three twenty-one Driftwood Drive, Lorain. And, uh, I haven't been here before, the commissioners, for many years. But I, when I was a younger man, I was very active in transportation and worked very closely with the Board of Commissioners in Lorain County. Uh, brought Amtrak service here in the mid-seventies, and, uh, after that, Jerry Karen and Fred Rittenhour appointed me to be the head of the county transit board, and we built a transit system. Uh, unfortunately, we had fixed route buses as well as dial-a-ride, and we don't have the fixed route, as you know, anymore. But I've decided to come back because over the last five or ten years, many people and businesses have been approaching me to get involved on another issue. And it's a very small issue before some of your major concerns that you have here today. It's the extending of State Route two fifty-four from Route fifty-seven by Midway Mall to Amherst to Route fifty-eight Levert Road. I've been approached by residents who are confused. Why would they be confused? Well, that particular street in a stretch of four miles is called Detroit Road, Foster Park, Cooper Foster Park, and, um, North Ridge.
Right, that's where our business is, right.
Totally confusing. And, um, I've been approached, um, by, um, other people here, uh, visitors, actually. We had visitors coming in for Lorain International Festival, and when they came out Route two fifty-four and it ended at fifty-seven, they weren't quite sure what to do. What I'm going to propose is asking you to pass a resolution to ODOT to extend the routing number on that highway. It's going to accomplish a number of things. I spoke to the deputy, I spoke to the deputy director down in Ashland, he said he has never requ- uh, uh, had never had requested from Lorraine County the extension of that number. He told me that Lorraine City, Sheffield Village, Amherst, and the county commissioners have never, ever, as far as he could determine in the records, requested an extension of that route. What will that do? That will help our businesses, that's a growing area between our major cities, people getting off, the new Meyer store that's gonna be built there in Lorraine-Amherst area, but it's also going to save Lorraine County some money. And I know that you folks are looking for ways to save some money, every dollar is precious. And if the state takes over maintenance, Lorraine County will spend less, City of Lorraine and Amherst that are now trying to repave that section, uh, going past Giant Eagle, they're working together because it's one of the bumpiest roads in Lorraine County. Passing a resolution, and then I will begin to work with the two newspapers here in Lorraine County to get their support and approach Lorraine City, Sheffield Village, and Amherst. So, it makes a lot of sense to do this, and I'm asking you to pass a resolution that will go to ODOT, uh, the division based down in Ashland, requesting they extend the routing number of two fifty-four into the heart of our county and our business area. So, that's all. Any questions that you might have? Oh, there's a few things out there. I do a lot with NOAC and the funding, I should get a couple million dollars for the Amherst-Lorraine Co. A lot of the rules will fall, ODOT necessarily wouldn't take over the maintenance of those roads within the cities, they, that becomes a city responsibility most of the time, it's within their boundaries, but I mean, it, this doesn't need a resolution, matter of making a request with the other communities if they wanna ask for a change in the two fifty-four. Right, may I ask you a question? Sure, without a doubt. The state is starting this week repaving Lake Road, East Erie Avenue in the city of Lorraine, from Baumhart Road to the Sheffield city limit. Correct. That is a state and a, a highway, and I believe the state of Ohio is paying a large portion of the repaving. Correct, yeah, large portion, there's a, always a local portion of it, correct. Right, I also believe that if they can take over routing two fifty-four to Levitt Road, in the future, they will also help pay for maintenance and paving of that road, and it'll be less on Lorraine County and on the cities involved. Right, to a degree, depending where you get the money. Exactly. Like I said, on that whole thing they played with for the last twenty years to widen Cooper Foster from Oberlin Avenue down to Kroski Drive, you know, we just got two and a half million dollars or so to help with that, so we'll start another year and a half or so. But yeah, then you know, it goes to request project, still does the same program to get it done, but ODOT is the lead on it versus the city. Right.
Can you see a downside to it?
No, only, my only concern would be probably is if they decide they were gonna, whenever the state, if they renumber all of the addresses.
Changing all the addresses.
Changing all the addresses into the five-digit model, you know, because now they've got the different, I'm, I'm a four-digit where I'm at with my business, you're three-digit between, you know, going in and out. I don't believe by, I don't believe by putting the route number on that stretch of road that the people, the residences, the businesses would need to change their addresses. I don't know, it'd be, my only thing I think would be a concern is that they need to renumber everything to make it concurrent. I don't think that's necessary, because in Lakewood, uh, there's a portion of two fifty-four going through Rocky River and it, it doesn't- They didn't change it? It didn't change it. All right, I never paid attention to it, yeah, you just brought it up here.
Yeah, it's a interesting, I, something I think we should look at.
Yeah, do a request. It's worth looking at.
Yeah, it is, definitely.
Yeah, one of the biggest unfunded, well, could be maybe the biggest unfunded mandate the state handed us is when the state said if the state route comes through your community, you're responsible for taking care of it. That happened under the Taft administration, and I remember when I was a reporter in, uh, Salt Lake City, and the state of Utah decided to do the same thing, and all the local communities were up in arms, and, um, so yeah, I was, this was, and even during, uh, budget discussions and finance committee, I used to offer that amendment, that the, the state routes would go back to being the responsibility of the state, and that was always quickly tabled.
You were part of it, the entire Elyria administration, going through seven, eight years trying to cobble together the dollars to do fifty-seven throughout the municipality.
Fifty-seven, right, right, yeah.
Well, thank you.
But, yeah, it's very interesting.
Now, give each of you a map showing what I'm requesting.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did that complete your comments, then? Okay.
Frank?
Yeah, good morning again. Frank Whitfield, two hundred Middle Avenue, Suite two hundred, Elyria, Ohio. Uh, so, the reason I came this morning is, um, one, first off, to thank you all, uh, for appointing me to the Board of the Lorraine County Children's Services, um, and to let you know that my term will be ending August third, twenty seventeen, and also to encourage you to really, um, to work diligently with myself and the board to fill the vacancies. Um, this time for the agency is crucial with the drastic surge we've seen in cases due to the opioid crisis, um, we're in the midst of revising our board policies and governance model, and, and we will have three out of our five board members transitioning within three months. So this is a huge transition, and as someone who's invested their time and energy and resources into this board, I just really wanna make sure the progress that we've established continues and maintains. So, the first piece is just offering myself as a resource, um, in that transition, and just really encouraging you all to, uh, work with the board to help find those appointments. I've, I've talked with the board already, the folks transitioning and the folks who will be sticking around to provide names and recommendations and referrals to be appointed to the board, uh, folks who kinda get where we are and where we're heading and are passionate about the issue, and, yeah, just thankful for the opportunity. It's been a great ride these past four years, uh, bringing Scott on, I would, uh, my first meeting was, uh, the meeting we were, um, hiring the director, and, uh, just watching his growth, watching the agency growth, watch the culture change there, watch the accomplishments the agency has had, watched how responsive they've been, passed the levy, it's just been a great ride, uh, so I'm just appreciative of the ride and being able to serve and just implore you to just continue to work with that board to make sure that the progress continues, and I provided a little letter as well.
Thank you, appreciate your service, Frank, done a nice job there.
Yeah, wanted to thank you for your service as well, and as I said, I'm certainly interested in hearing, uh, your thoughts concerning, uh, what you've learned and where you think we can improve or stay the course, and all that feedback's very important.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? Seeing none, I move that we go, oh.
You didn't move fast enough, Commissioner.
I tried. Darn it.
Last week, uh- Come on Jerry, you gotta talk up here. Almost got you Jerry.
Mother Nature calls.
Gerald W. Phillips, four sixty-one, Winwood Way, Avon Lake, Ohio, four four oh one two. Last week it was the shortest meeting, twenty minutes, and it was gone, so my updates for two weeks. On the sales tax, uh, Fourth of July weekend out in the community, North Ridgeville, Grafton, Wellington, uh, I personally got over five hundred signatures last weekend, out again in the community, getting additional signatures. Our group is at the point where we've got eight thousand signatures at the moment and excess of, and we still have a, a month to go in order, we have to file them by August, um, ninth. Uh, we have future events, we'll be out in the community again, uh, pursuing that issue, educating the public. The sad thing is this issue probably will end up in litigation. Mr. Ennis has, uh, made an opinion that, uh, he doesn't think we have the legal right. I respect Mr. Ennis's opinion. I prepared a, a legal memorandum in it, and I understand, uh, Mr. Ennis's opinion, uh, but I think we have a, a good argument, you know, to get it on the ballot. The sad thing is, uh, this, if it doesn't get on the ballot, it's going to anger the voters even more so than what they are presently. And, uh, this doesn't help the negative image that the commissioners have and the county has, and, you know, your approval rating is very low, you know, less than Donald Trump. So, the second issue is the District Seven. They filed their petition, it's been in the newspapers, you're probably aware of, of the fact it got, they filed it on June thirtieth, the Board of Elections, uh, determined that they had six thousand six hundred and twenty-two signatures, which was less. And also, you know, they ended up in a tie vote concerning the legality of it. Uh, Mr. Ennis had an opinion, and I agree with Mr. Ennis. I believe that that petition is illegal. His arguments about the lack of an appendix, and they're trying to do two forms of, of a petition in one, I agree with them, and there's some additional issues, too. But it's really sad that party politics entered into that decision. You know, that vote was split by party lines. Uh, the comments that I read, I didn't attend the meeting, but I think it's pretty insensitive when a board member chastises the counsel of the board in the manner that I saw. I think that's reprehensible of a public official, and you can, you, they can, they can, they can say all they want about this is nonpartisan, but this issue clearly about the charter petition is clearly partisan, it's Republican-driven, uh, but I can give you this assurance, in my legal opinion, that won't be on the ballot in November, because I think it's clearly illegal. The sad thing for Mr. Ennis is he may be ending up with litigation on the sales tax in the District Seven, and he may have two expedited election cases, which Jerry and I have done in the past, and, you know, uh, it's not a pleasant event, right Jerry?
That's right.
Uh, the last time I had two election cases was, uh, involve Oberlin and Wellington, but it didn't involve the, the, the county. Uh, myself and Mr. Baxter has been here over the last couple months, trying to work on a solution, you know, uh, and, uh, I'm gonna make this little more specific proposal, uh, to deal with the sales tax issue, to help the, the county funding, and I believe to help restore confidence in the county and the commissioners. I think you need to repeal the current sales tax increase. If you do it, it'll, it'll, it'll be effective the first quarter, October first. At the same time, you need to put on the ballot, uh, a sales tax increase to replace it. With the comments I made about having a specific funds, specific areas that are critical, police safety for the townships, uh, the drug issue, the alcohol issue, nine eleven, I'm sure you, you have, uh, particular needs that, uh, the public would be, be very receptive of. I've, I've been to a number of the meetings, and I, I know there are needs, but you gotta educate the, the people. In exchange, uh, there's current litigation, we would, in essence, potentially dismiss that lawsuit, you would collect for six months from April first to October first, half of the ten million dollars, you would get five million dollars. Uh, I have to get approval from the committee and the plaintiffs in the lawsuit, but we would want that, that fund, that five million, to have some kind of specific funds for specific needs, and that could be worked out, uh, you know, in detail, uh, to address the most pressing needs. You know, it's on the table, you know, Jerry and I have talked some general concepts, but, and I think as a result of this, if, if we do work a solution, it'll lessen the anger out there, and lessen the anger in connection with any future, uh, tax increases. Because if the anger continues, I mean, even though the District Seven petition is gonna be invalid, there may be another group, you know, a better petition for county reform in the year two thousand eighteen, and, and you're gonna have to deal with that anger, and you're just fueling that anger. I can tell you personally, having gotten thirteen hundred signatures, District Seven wouldn't be getting the signatures that they did for that petition if it wasn't for the anger about the sales tax, uh, and the fact that they're paying circulators to do it. Our groups are just concerned citizens, angry about the right to vote. Recently, I've been approached by an out-of-state developer who's interested in doing some economic development in, in, in Lorraine County. Presently, he's got a project that's in, in progress, he's got some future. At the present, I can't disclose that, but I look forward potentially to work with, um, the Economic Development Department, John Romancik, and the commissioners to- Did I get the right name?
Don.
Don, excuse me.
Close enough Jerry.
It rhymes, that's all.
So, a couple meetings ago, Mr. Lundey asked a question about the District Seven, and I told him it's a lengthy discussion. I'll make this offer to each commissioner, Commissioner Lundey, Commissioner Calhoun, and Commissioner Kokowski. I'm willing to meet with you one-on-one, to talk about the charter petition, reform of government in Lorraine County, economic development for the county, and how to make Lorraine, Lorraine County, you know, better and great. We won't talk about the sales tax, but, uh, if you're interested, you know, I'm willing to talk to you. I'm a resident of thirty-four years, and in order to make Lorraine County great again and to bring economic development, you can't, you can't be a D and an R issue, you can't be red or blue. It's gotta be nonpartisan, you know, uh, and, and I know I'm not the most well-liked person, the irrs don't like me, and I'm sure at times I've aggravated a lot of Ds, but, uh, from my experience, I've worked better with the Ds in, in connection with the, the Columbia Station township issues and with landowners' agreements and, and the commissioners at that time. Finally, just one, one comment. I think the public has a misconception of Mr. Cordez and the commissioners. They don't come to the meetings, they don't hear all the things you do, like I have, uh, and all I hear is venting the anger, so, I don't know how you convey that, but, you know, I think generally, hearing, you know, what you do and your concerns, you generally care for the best of the county. I just think sometimes you make errors of judgments, and sometimes maybe partisan politics influences your decisions. I think the sales tax was an example of, of an error of it in, in your decision, so. Have a good day.
Thanks Jerry.
Anybody else wishing to address the board this morning? Come on up.
Morning Mark.
He didn't know you were gonna be so busy in retirement, did you?
Gotta take a big breath here, no. Mark Holman, ten thirty-four, Rome Beauty Drive, Amherst. Thank you for what you folks do, I continue to appreciate your efforts. I hadn't intended to speak today, but Attorney Phillips kind of struck a nerve that caused me to, um, examine my conscience, and my conscience said, "Get your butt up there and talk," so that's what I'm gonna do. I'm angry, I'm angry that I'm listening to media and I don't know what to believe and what not to believe, and I really would like to know what's accurate. I can't discern what's accurate and what's not, but I heard Attorney Phillips make two comments. One is that, um, the commissioners, that this body here, has a very poor approval rating. Well, I would like to challenge Mr. Phillips that if that's the case, what's the evidence that supports that? What can I look at that, that says that? Because that doesn't feel right to me. By and large, you guys are doing a great job. I think things are good in our county, there are a few things that, um, I would like to see handled a little differently, but when you look at the big picture, I don't see why your approval rating wouldn't be really good. So if there's evidence that indicates that your approval rating is low, I'd like to see it. And secondly, and another comment that was made about the recent Board of Elections decision, if I heard the comment correctly, it was that those folks voting on that voted along party lines. Well, there again, I'd like to see the evidence. My guess is that they voted what they felt was the right decision at the time, and had nothing to do with party lines. People talk about elected officials, and I hear a lot- People talk about elected officials, and I hear a lot of bad things about them, and it kind of saddens me, because my experience with elected officials is that, and I've been one, we all want to do the best job that we can, and that's what we're there for. We're there to try to do the best job that we can. And I'm just taking exception to some of the negativity that I've been hearing, and I just felt like I had to come up and get this off my chest.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for that opportunity.
You can actually speak from that podium if you like. Just your name and address, please.
Patricia Flowers, 254 Colorado Avenue, Lorraine, Ohio. For the gentleman who just spoke and was wishing for evidence as to the possibility of why your approval rating is low, it's because the voters voted. It's all about the voters. That's why. That's all I wanted to say. If you want evidence, talk to the voters.
Anyone else? You can come up, sure.
Very quick.
You have to, yeah, you have to be at the microphone now.
Thank you. Thank you for that, and I understand what you're saying, and I agree with it. My only comment would be, please, let's look at the big picture. And maybe that's one point, which obviously it is, but big picture, a lot of good things are happening, and off, off the top of my head right now, I can't list them all, but a lot of good things that are happening because of this board and because of our county government. And let's not lose sight of that. Let's keep in mind the big picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming, I would make a motion that we go into executive session as outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Right.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.